Awesome. Well, thank you all for it gets super hot. I just want to thank everybody for making this moment happen. There's been two or three significant moments of history of this house when it first opened, when it was reopened, and now this moment of designation. And it's great that you kind of paraphrase Stan Lee there, you know, to say with great recognition comes great responsibility. But it's what I wanted to leave you with, that we need to pass that baton on to the next generation. Fifty years from now, this place will be in need of that constant investment. Next week, it'll be in need of that constant curation and volunteerism. And if we are able to do that and fulfill that, then I think we'll be worthy of this designation because it's been given to us by this globe, for this globe. We are just the caretakers of it. So congratulations, everybody, and enjoy this wonderful home. Congrats.
In L.A. this week. In what's being described as the largest ceremony on the West Coast, the Los Angeles Fire Department is remembering the victims of the September 11th attacks. I'm Anita Bennett, and I'll take you to the ceremony just ahead.
Free shoes for the kids at Ricardo Lizaraga Elementary in South Central. I'm Anna Margos. That's coming up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And meet San Fernando Valley's newest council member, John S. Lee. That's coming up. Hey, everyone. I'm Yana K. Here's what's happening on L.A. this week. Los Angeles leaders mark the anniversary of the September 11th attacks with a message of hope and a vow that the city will never forget. Anita Bennett reports. As bagpipes played in the background, hundreds of police, firefighters, and political leaders remembered fallen heroes from September 11th.
We were attacked as a nation for what we stood for. And our response is what we stand for. And what we stand for is each other.
The police chief and others gathered at the LAFD's Training Center in Elysian Park to reflect on a day that changed so many lives. A day when nearly 3,000 people died as terrorists flew passenger planes into the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania.
We learned later that day that three of those four planes were headed to our City of Angels, and the fourth to our sister city in the north in San Francisco.
For those too young to remember the attacks, events like this bring attention to that fateful day 18 years ago.
I think it's important that we have functions like this to teach the lessons of 9/11, the sacrifices that were made to our younger people. It's very important.
Other guests in the audience included members of the City Council and the L.A. County Board of Supervisors.
I was back in Washington, D.C. on September 11th and watched the Pentagon burn and actually had two college friends that perished in the World Trade Center. So this has a special meaning for me as well.
9/11 reminds us of those words, "We will never forget." And those words have been embedded in our hearts and minds even 18 years later.
Some of the people who died were first responders who rushed into burning buildings, knowing they might not make it out alive. And tragically, many did not.
To our comrades, their last alarm, they are going home.
Eighteen years later, the effects of the 9/11 attacks are still visible with increased airport security and U.S. troops stationed abroad to help fight terrorism. Switching gears now, as newly elected L.A. City Councilmember John Lee was sworn in at a community inauguration ceremony. Lee, who will represent the 12th district, promised to listen to his constituents as he tackles key issues.
I always talk to him that you listen more than you talk. And I'm sure he remembers that. So as a councilman, a lot of people are going to talk to him, you listen to them. And that is my advice with him.
It's been a long time that he's been in this realm, and the fact that he deserves it.
He cares about people, he understands problems, and he's a good listener. So all those qualities that are critically important when you're electing somebody, you know, it's really hard to find that on a ballot.
I love the fact that he was born and raised here, you know, just like I was. You know, we have a true passion for delivering services to the Valley.
To your newly elected Council District 12 Councilmember, John S. Lee.
I, John Lee.
I, John Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilists of 12 know that I am planning on going to work and to solve the many issues facing not only our city, but this district.
I know that no one is more proud of this incredible honor that you've bestowed to him than my friend, John.
We need to put parties aside, labels aside, and we need to work together. I am ready, and you have my commitment to work together on those tough problems to get these problems solved. Thank you very much, everybody.
For the first time ever, there are now two Asian-Americans serving on the L.A. City Council at the same time. In an effort to lessen the risk of brush fires, city officials are hoping a new ordinance can help make a difference.
This is not some sort of anti-homeless initiative. This is an initiative directed at the safety of our city.
It's about anybody who would be in the hillsides in locations where they don't belong.
On a red flag day, which is there's an imminent fire, it will be followed up by, you've got to leave, and if you don't leave, there could be enforcement action.
You know, it's always been the case that people were not allowed to be in these high-fire locations, certainly not encamped there. The police need to have the ability to have them removed, ideally willingly.
We can now take a major step towards reducing the likelihood of encampment fires like we saw in 2017 with the Skirball Fire.
When fire breaks out in those hillsides, it has the potential to be a great catastrophe.
This bill is about public safety. This is about preventing fires, plain and simple.
And if you want to help fight those fires, the Los Angeles Fire Department is looking for new recruits. To help candidates prepare for the physical ability tests, the department offers free practice courses. Anita Bennett takes a look. Edgar Diaz has always wanted to be a Los Angeles firefighter.
It's been a childhood dream of mine. I've attempted it before, and as I mentioned earlier, I just didn't feel like I was ready for it at that time.
After trying out a few years ago, he realized he wasn't quite up to the physical demands. Now, the licensed vocational nurse says he's ready to give it another try.
Once I got into the rhythm and the flow of things, I started to find my own way through the course, so I thought it was good.
Edgar was one of about a dozen candidates on a recent Wednesday at the LAFD's Training Center near Dodger Stadium. They were there to practice for the CPAT. That's the Candidate Physical Ability Test.
It's an opportunity for a person to come in and see what they need to work on. Again, if this career is really something they want to participate in for the future.
One of the tests that prospective candidates take is the mannequin drag, where they simulate a victim rescue. It goes something like this. And I got to tell you, this is tough. They also had to run with a fire hose, raise a ladder, just like in the field, carry chainsaws across the room, and walk on a stair climber wearing a 50-pound vest plus additional shoulder weights.
So basically, the added weight that you have, the vest, is going to be simulating our breathing apparatus. The added weights on the shoulders are going to be simulating a hose pack, the helmet glove for safety. And so you're going to be participating on basically what would be a high-rise investigation.
The 10-minute training course is free and mirrors a day in the life of a real firefighter.
We're right now currently in the hiring process for the Los Angeles Fire Department, and it serves as an opportunity for any member, for any fire service, it's not solely for LAFD, to come and participate and see if this is a career for them.
Edgar hopes he'll make the cut.
It's a profession I look up to, and I would love the opportunity to show what I have to offer, what I can bring to the city, and a city that's given me so much more.
To sign up for a session, head over to Eventbrite.com and search "LAFD CPAT Practice." The free CPAT classes are held each Wednesday and occasionally on Saturdays. It's National Preparedness Month, and a great time to remember to also prepare for your pets in case disaster strikes.
What this dog will do is go into a disaster area like hurricanes, earthquakes, terrorist events. It will search on rubble or debris and try to find the missing people that are buried underneath. As soon as they indicate by barking, we get a rescue team in there to confirm that, and we can rescue the people.
Today, we're at the California Science Center, and there's an exhibit here called "A Dog's Tale." The Fire Department showed how their search and rescue dogs can find people buried in earthquake rubble. We know people would rather not get rescued than leave their pet behind, and we know that pets will risk their lives for their people, so this has to be part of true disaster planning. The most important thing about caring for your pets during a disaster is to prepare before the disaster, because you may not be home when an earthquake hits or when a fire hits your area. So you want to make sure that your pet enclosures are secure so they can't escape, nothing can fall on them, scratch them, poke them if they're in that situation. You want to make sure that your pet has ID and current vaccinations. And in your disaster preparedness bag, if you're preparing to evacuate, you want to make sure you have your pet papers, any medication the pet is on, just like you are, extra water, extra pet food, something to calm the pet down, a favorite toy. So if you're with your pet, you can relocate with your pet and have those things with you. If you're not with your pet, then at least you can secure the location, put a sign on saying, "I have two dogs inside," so that if someone comes out to rescue them, they know what to look for.
Residents of Nickerson Gardens are getting a helping hand in finding and securing a job thanks to a new Jobs Plus program.
I'm doing construction. I'm on 12-story buildings, hanging off scaffolds, so it's like, phew, it's tough, but you got to stick in there because now it was just a job to people, now I have a career, and it pays well. So I just encourage everybody to just take advantage of the jobs that they have around here because it pays off at the end.
We've been awarded $3.7 million by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development called a Jobs Plus program. So we're going to be bringing access to employment specifically for residents of Nickerson Gardens. It'll be job training, job placement for careers here at Nickerson.
We've been able to come here and invest in the community with programs for the young people to make sure they can graduate and go to college. Jobs Plus program here at Nickerson Gardens will connect more than 700 residents to good-paying construction and healthcare careers between now and 2023.
Today gives us an opportunity to remind ourselves that there is good opportunities here with this type of grants that's coming from the federal government down to the local level.
Now, after you graduate, we want to make sure that folks here in Nickerson Gardens can benefit from a growing economy, not just jobs, but careers to people in construction and healthcare.
The initiative is funded by a $3.7 million grant, which was awarded to Hacklaw by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development earlier this year. From jobs to housing, more beds were rolled out to help those experiencing homelessness. Folks celebrated the grand opening of the sixth bridge housing site to open in L.A.
We had a bridge home in Hyde Park in South Los Angeles, 100 beds, ready to go for people who are living on the streets and who are houseless.
There are thousands of men and women and children sleeping on the streets every single day because they don't have a place to live. And so this site, a bridge home, is going to house 100 of those people, move them directly from street into a safe place to be. You have three meals a day provided for you. In addition to that, you have all these other services we're going to bring to you, so that this is just your first stop, but your final stop is your own place with your own keys.
This is not a thing where we can just have a party today, turn our backs and wipe our hands. We have to engage with this facility, and we have to engage with the community of neighbors that will live here with us. This isn't a problem we can't solve. Don't tell me we can't do things that will house our brothers and sisters. We can and we will, my friends. This is a bright spot and a very tough problem that we all face, but history will record that we're facing it, facing it head-on, and we're getting it done.
What happens when the LAPD, the L.A. Dodgers, and the group Shoes That Fit team up at an elementary school? Well, it not only helps kids in an economically challenged community, it also turns into a giant shoe party. Anna Margos takes in the back-to-school shoe giveaway.
Look at that! 200 kids are trying on brand-new pairs of shoes just in time for the start of the school year. And each shoebox has their name on it.
I love them, and I always want to keep them on my legs.
Smiling faces and so much excitement are the order of the day as kids at Ricardo Lizaraga Elementary in South L.A. get ready to try on their brand-new and free pairs of shoes.
You're one of the few kids who's not wearing her shoes. Why not?
I want to save them so they won't get dirty.
And many of you may be wearing shoes that were handed down to you from your brother or sister, or a friend, or a yard sale. And so today, the opportunity to have a brand-new pair of shoes, in some instances, it may be your first pair.
And it's not just anybody helping these kids lace up the new athletic shoes. Chief Michael Moore himself from the LAPD and L.A. Dodgers outfielder A.J. Pollak are waiting on them, hand and foot, you could say.
These young people are coming from a community that is impoverished, that is challenged, and a community sometimes the only time you see an officer is when he or she's running to a call or responding to an emergency or crisis. And the opportunity for an officer to just to stand and smile and maybe bend a knee, play a game, have some small talk with a young person is too few. Today is an opportunity to do that.
We're able to bring a lot of shoes to some really happy kids.
The shoe giveaway is a partnership between the LAPD, the L.A. Dodgers Foundation, and Shoes That Fit, a nonprofit group.
We have a whole measuring packet. We work with schools to make sure the kids are measured beforehand, and then we order the shoes in that size.
So it allows them to be more confident, be more active, because they have a pair of shoes that fit.
We want to make sure that students are coming to school ready to learn, and one thing that they do need is the proper clothing, the proper materials to get started. Ready, set, go!
And the best part for the kids?
My shoes are fast, too.
Your shoes are fast, too?
The kids seem to think their new shoes give them wings or something.
I go fast with my shoes, and my mommy's going to be happy with them.
You think they'll make you go faster?
Yes.
For the grown-ups, speed is nice, but they also hope the new shoes give the kids a little extra bounce in their step that just may also bounce up their academic performance. There's now also a new mobile trailer to help deliver the shoes to various schools. A helipad at the Olive View Medical Hospital in Silmar is back in business after a much-needed restoration. It will now serve as an additional resource for firefighters during the upcoming fire season and into the future.
Welcome to the unveiling of one of our newest firefighting resources.
This heli-spot was inoperable due to damage that we suffered during a brush fire over a decade ago. We now have a brand-new heli-spot.
The northeast San Fernando Valley is very familiar with tragic devastation.
Right now, we're in the most extreme part of the fire season. From our perspective, it's not if it will happen, it's just when it will happen.
This is critical because we've had historically large fires in this part of the city, such as the Mayor and the Sayer and the Creek Fire.
This is what it's about. This is good government working together for the benefit of the entire region.
We are improving public safety for the residents of the northeast San Fernando Valley and greater Los Angeles region.
I'm also pleased to share that our new helicopter parked behind us is a 2019 Augusta Westland AW-139, which we placed into service just a few weeks ago at a cost of $18 million. Our helicopters are capable of dropping 450 gallons of water per drop and are available for response 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So in closing, your Los Angeles City and County Fire Departments are prepared for the busy brush season that's ahead of us.
If you're looking for a spot to go biking free of cars, this may be it. A pedestrian and bike path that runs along the L.A. Riverbank and Studio City between Coldwater Canyon and Witsit Avenue has just opened. It marks the completion of the second phase of the city's L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan.
Merrick Garcetti's vision, and many others, has been to bring this river back to life, and we bring it back to life a segment at a time. Previously, there was no access to the river. It was basically gated off and used for city purposes, but now that they've been adding sections so people can bike and walk and just even some park features. It's also a very big step forward in connecting all of these segments into one continuous, wonderful recreational asset that extends from Canoga Park all the way to Universal City and beyond.
This is access for the community as we strive to increase accessibility for every resident in the city to be close to a park within a half-mile walking distance. This also represents that huge endeavor that we're after here in the City of Los Angeles.
I look for places like this to ride with my six-year-old daughter. People want to be able, people want to have safe places to go and walk and bike. I grew up in this neighborhood, and there's a number of businesses that are just behind the L.A. River, so having access to it, it's been something I've been waiting for for decades.
The path, which used to be a maintenance access road, features new paving, fencing, trees, and bike racks. A bridge housing facility for women opens, television shows filmed in L.A. are honored, and a Caribbean festival offers up cultural and culinary delights. All this in City V. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell put the spotlight on locally-made TV shows that are nominated for Emmy Awards with the "Made in Hollywood" honors. The awards recognize projects that keep productions in California.
This is really something to celebrate. These are jobs in the tens of thousands that have come back to the City of Los Angeles into the region, and that deserves some celebratory applause right there.
Made in Hollywood.
The Gardner Street Women's Bridge Housing Center opened its doors recently. City leaders were there to celebrate the grand opening. The center will house 30 women at a time and will include staff, security, and onsite services. The African-American Caribbean Festival at Lamert Park Village was a fun-filled happening that included music from a variety of artists. The second annual event was free to the public. It's not very often that the community has a chance to recognize and thank their local firefighters. That's why Councilmember Bob Blumenfield got everyone together recently for some barbecue.
Five, four, three, two, one. Let's roll the movie! Well, this is an honor-a-hero event, but we wanted to make this also a chance to meet different first responders. So we have police, we have fire, we have emergency preparedness spokes. At 8 o'clock at night, we're going to show a movie, Incredibles 2, to make it fun for the whole family and make it a nice evening. Also have free hot dogs and hamburgers, and the Fire Department's grilling it up. Firefighters have volunteered to do that. Tonight, the L.A. City Fire Department Union was asked to provide the Moab, mother of all barbecues, and we cooked approximately 350 hamburgers and 300 hot dogs. I mean, it's all about community, and this is a day about the community getting in touch with our emergency preparedness spokes, our police, our fire, et cetera, and building communities.
I don't think they get tanked enough for what they do, you know? They risk their lives every day, and they do a great job, and we need to show them that we care, we appreciate what they do. There should be more of this, like, every day, you know? They're always there, and they're like invisible heroes.
I don't think any firefighter ever considers himself a hero. It's just something we're doing for the citizens and the community and stuff that we love to do, to help our community, help our people, helping our family. The people of this city are our family.
Love tacos? Well, who doesn't, right? Then head on over to a taco festival, visit your favorite museum for free, and dust off those roller skates or rent ones for a good cause. All this in Things to Do. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez presents the Silmar Taco Festival, a free food and music festival featuring the tastiest taco and culinary creations in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Have a fun-filled day with live music, a taco-eating contest, car show, and of course tacos from Silmar. You don't want to miss out on Silmar Taco Festival, happening Saturday, September 21st, from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Silmar Park. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Museum Day is a one-day event where participating museums and cultural institutions across the country provide free entry to anyone with a Museum Day ticket. These downloadable tickets are one ticket per email address and admit two people per ticket. Come discover L.A. art and culture at Museum Day 2019, happening throughout Los Angeles on Saturday, September 21st. For more details, visit SmithsonianMag.com/MuseumDay. In recognition of World Alzheimer's Day, the Grand Park Foundation hosts All Skate for Alzheimer's. Bring the whole family to check out downtown L.A.'s first-ever outdoor roller skating rink. Skate, play, and eat as we celebrate the heroic efforts and services provided daily by Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers. Three days of fun await at the All Skate for Alzheimer's event, happening September 20th through the 22nd at Grand Park in downtown L.A. For tickets, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Check out the L.A. Fashion Festival, where progressive ideas meet immersive cultural experiences through film, retail, and beauty. This two-day festival includes fashion films, workshops, and pop-up experiences. The festival aims for meaningful exchanges via cutting-edge brand experiences, hands-on master classes, and thought-provoking panel discussions. Explore an event where textiles and sustainability converge. It's the Los Angeles Fashion Festival, happening September 20th and 21st at Film Studios. For more, visit LAFashionFestival.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityV.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week.
Good morning, good morning. If everybody could please take a seat. Shhh. I want to welcome you to City Hall, this Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kukorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval in a minute.
O'Farrell moves. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Corretts moves. Sidio seconds, next.
Mr. President, item number one is an item notice for a public hearing. There are cards on this one, sir.
Okay, let's move on to the next set of items.
Items two through nineteen are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, well, let's prepare to vote on these items. It's my understanding that we're supposed to hold eighteen.
Yes, there is a request to hold eighteen, please.
Okay, let's hold eighteen. We'll vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item number twenty is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that item is before this body. Do you have cards on?
Yes, sir, there are cards on that.
Okay, let's continue.
Next are items twenty-one through twenty-three, and those are items which are scheduled for closed session.
I'll defer to Mr. Kukorian on these items. Mr. Kukorian, items twenty-one through twenty-three.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items twenty-one through twenty-three are all routine settlements that have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Each of those matters can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Madam Clerk, why don't you read the items, and then we'll vote on them.
Item twenty-one, regarding the potential resolution of penalties assessed against Ocwen Financial Corporation under the foreclosure registry program, the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department is authorized to accept the one-time cash payment of $1,488,700 from Ocwen to the city. Item twenty-two, in the case entitled Sharon Watson, Marzette Etall versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to $150,000. And item twenty-three, in the case entitled Mona Izraoui versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand up to $500,000.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Next, on the continuation agenda, item twenty-four is an item for which public hearing has been held, and this item should be held on a desk for an amendment, sir.
Well, let's do that, and that brings us where?
That brings council to presentations. Items called special or public comments, sir.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez, for today's first presentation, I'll join you from here.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, and as we all very well know, today has been a little bit traumatized by traffic beyond our control, and certainly beyond our unwanted visitor, we'll just say. So today, I am really honored to be joining you, Mr. President, in acknowledging the contributions of an outstanding coalition that is celebrating their tenth anniversary, and that is the anniversary of the Latino Coalition. If we can please give him a round of applause.
Please give him a round of applause.
You know, as we celebrate Latino Heritage Month and recognize that, you know, Latinos are not monolithic. We are representative of a diverse group of communities, and this effort of the Latino Coalition is emblematic of that. It is one that is bringing all voices together to assure that equally we are all advocating and advancing the agenda for help assuring human rights, for help assuring the respect and the dignity of our collective communities and what they deserve. You know, it was only a few months ago that I had an opportunity to visit Homestead in Florida, and it was a very disturbing sight to see so many children separated from their families and experiencing the trauma of being marched out of the facility in hundred-degree weather, in humidity, and having to live in the conditions forcibly at the hands of our own government. We are seeing the continuance of that behavior from this presidential administration, and what I am most proud of is the response that members of the Los Angeles community brought to the attention to help assure that we were not going to sit idly by and watch this happen, but we were going to respond. When the ICE raids occurred in Mississippi, they took action, and in response, they raised $10,000 in ten days to help assure that those children and their families were getting the support that they needed, and I think that deserves an incredible round of applause. We do have a very quick video that we'd like to share, and so if we could go ahead and cue that video. that impacted immigrant Latino communities. Ten years, fifty partner organizations, and hundreds of volunteer hours later, they continue to build on this mission of advocating for underserved communities and building the next generation of leaders. You know, the raids that we continue to bear witness to are horrifying, and I really appreciate and respect the fact that our community has coalesced to make sure that, again, we are not going to sit idle but be responsive to this agenda that has really impacted and traumatized so many youth, when youth should be experiencing some of the greatest memories of their life, they're being traumatized, inflicted by our own government. And I'm just so grateful that they have been part of a unified voice that has helped to assure that we are going to respond, and it's going to be swift, and it's going to be meaningful. And so with that, I'd like to ask my very good friend, who I know has been an incredible supporter, and thank you for joining me and, you know, helping to bring this presentation together, our council president, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I'm so excited that you have brought this organization, or this group of organizations, into City Hall. For me, with this, the folk that stand behind me, it's really kind of personal. They have been my supporters, they have been my friends, they have been the soldiers in the region, and I can't think of one time when the district was in need that they didn't show up. Led by my dear friend and almost adopted son, Raul Claros, my godmother, Isabel to my left, Cardenas, Dr. Chicas. When we were trying to bring this city, when others were trying to tear this city apart at the seams, it was meetings with this group where we were determined to try to bring us back together as the United States of America, and they have played a very important role in engaging in conversations throughout the city of Los Angeles, people from different generations, different religions, different ethnic makeups, to talk about not so much the things that make us different, but the things that unite us. Whenever there's a toy drive, whenever there's a need to give away food, whenever, 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 they're always there. So I was so pleased when Ms. Rodriguez suggested that we bring this group in. I'll never forget, I was celebrating my thirty-ninth birthday, thirty-ninth and holding, when they had a special emergency meeting on November eleventh, about four or five days after the presidential election, and that's when we knew that it was time to roll up our sleeves to protect the people of this great city. That's when we, as a people, decided that it was more important to us what kind of neighbor you were going to be, and what kind of citizen your children are going to grow up to be, than what type of documents that you might have in your back pocket or in your dresser drawer. And so we have been united to do everything that we can to protect all of the residents of this city. But then with what occurred in the South, this organization got together and did events to raise money to send back down south, and I was proud to attend, I think, one event, and I'm going to be doing another event, I believe, with Ms. Rodriguez tomorrow. So I just wanted to stand here today to thank you, and I think that it's very appropriate that here we are in Latino Heritage Month, that we honor you. There are so many organizations that don't last ten minutes. For you guys to last ten years is very important. Plus, members, it really gave me an ability, because they organized like my Central American community within the district that I had been struggling to try to connect with for so long, but because of them, that connection is there, that connection is strong, that connection is really together. In fact, what is it, Unidos Podemos Más, together we can do more, and so with that, I'm just honored to stand with each and every one of you, and I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, and I know Ms. Martinez, and I know Mr. Weezer wanted to be part of this. I know Mr. Weezer is also joining us tomorrow at the event commemorating the ten years tomorrow, along with Mayor Eric Garcetti, so I think it's, again, it's apropos that we bring them in to recognize their work and thank them for all their years of service to our community, and I'd like to bring up right now our very good friend, the founder of the Latino Coalition of Los Angeles, Mr. Raul Claros.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez and Council President Wesson, for those warm words. City Council members, thank you. It's been a privilege for the last decade to work alongside many of you, but today I'm here to accept this recognition with the support of those that I stand on their shoulders and have the support of, not only today but for the last ten years, starting off with folks like Alex Sanchez, who is here, Isabel Cardenas, Francisco Rivera. These are Central American and Salvadoran leaders that for so long have put in so much work at different levels, whether it's been at a grassroots level, doing gang intervention and prevention, to putting together festivals and different events that can allow us that were born here or came here at a very early age in our lives to still be connected to our communities, and so we're thankful. We're also thankful to those that have been putting in work within the organization, like Joseph Chicas, Rashad Rucker, Jay Cortez, that are part of now of the advisory board that has decided to move to the side a little bit and now let the next generation of leaders come in, and some of those leaders are here with Christina and Chris that are behind me, Cindy Viejas, our board member as well. We're just so grateful, but we're also here with Brother Winrow from Resita Church of Christ. We know that this cannot be just a Latino thing. The reason that the Latino Coalition was started was just to be able to get a seat at the table as Central Americans, and to be alongside our Mexican-American, our Korean-American, our Bangladeshi community members, and our African-American leaders that have all shared the same and similar struggles, because we're all Angelinos. And so it's not so much about the countries that we come from, but it's about the neighborhoods that we live in, and when we come outside, the one thing about living in the tenth district and in the eighth district and out in the valley is that it's a melting pot, right? From East Hollywood to Boyle Heights, it's just a melting pot, and so we're just grateful to be the Latino Coalition of Los Angeles. So with that, I thank you. I apologize if I missed anybody behind me. I don't have eyes in the back of my head just yet, but I definitely am definitely very grateful for this opportunity.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Before you do, Mr. Harris Dawson would like to speak.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonin, and thank you, Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Wesson, for bringing this great presentation. For our good friend, Raul Claros and the Latino Coalition, you all are an amazing, shining example of what everyday people can do when they put their minds to it and when the situation calls for everyday people to do big things. I can remember meeting with you all in Caveman's Kitchen late into the night, discussing programs in the park and community cleanups, and just dealing with what's in front of you. And then along comes Donald Trump, and he visits upon this country the kind of divisive action that we've seen now for three years going, and you all step up to the plate and respond far greater, in a far greater way than your numbers would have suggested, and I think that's an example for all of us, and is example for what all of us can do when we decide to take a stand and push back. So again, thank you all for being so instrumental in the eighth district and in the tenth district and in Central L.A. and the valley and all of it. We love you, and we want to see you get bigger and better and have an even brighter future.
Thank you, colleagues, and with that, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulations on ten years, wishing you continued success.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez and, or Ms. Rodriguez, and congratulations. Mr. O'Farrell, I understand you have an introduction?
Hello. I am so honored to welcome a real leader in the LGBT movement from El Salvador, and his name is William Hernandez, and he is a longtime accomplished icon in El Salvador, here on a special visit, and... And the host is the LGBT Los Angeles Center, and then Mario Alvarez with SEIU Local 721's Lavender LGBT Caucus Chair. Let me tell you a little bit about William Hernandez. He's the chief, he's the executive director of Entre Amigos, a Salvadoran nongovernmental organization that fights for the rights of LGBT people in El Salvador. Throughout his career as an activist, he's credited with integrating LGBT issues into social movements despite receiving death threats and intimidation directed at the community in El Salvador. William was invited, as I mentioned, to Los Angeles by the LGBT Center Los Angeles for their historic 50th anniversary celebration taking place this weekend. And I want to just acknowledge you for your incredible courage and your bravery in the face of the death threats and intimidation that you've encountered your entire career in El Salvador. It's a real issue in other countries, and even in our own country, in many places. We are in this bubble in Los Angeles where we think we're really progressive and everyone is welcome, no matter who you are or what you're about or what your beliefs are. But we are surrounded by discrimination and oppression. And for someone like William Hernandez to stand up and then lift other folks up who are under the similar threat but do not have the space in which they can be active in El Salvador, realize their full potential authentically as who they are, I think speaks to the incredible work that you do, Mr. Hernandez. So we want to welcome you to Los Angeles and provide with you the certificate of recognition on the occasion of your visit to Los Angeles. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you. Thank you.
And Mr. Hernandez is the other member of the Council's LGBT Caucus. I'd like to join you in the welcome and in the expression of appreciation for all your work. Thank you very much. Now going to recognize Mr. Ru, who has a presentation.
I am proud to be joined here by my colleague, Councilman Nori, Monica Rodriguez, and Councilwoman Nori Martinez, who is on her way. And if she, I know she's en route and she'll probably say a few words later. But of course, also President of the E-Bell of Los Angeles, Ginger Barnard, as well as many members, supporters, and leaders of the E-Bell as we celebrate an important date in our city's history, the 125th birthday of the E-Bell of Los Angeles. Give them a round of applause. The year is 1894. California has been part of the Union for 45 years. Los Angeles is a humble town of agriculture and industry, home to just over 50,000 residents, and its chief exports are fruits and nuts. We were a new city, a dawn of urban transformation, the likes of which America has never seen. In this very same year, an inventor and entrepreneur named Harriet Williams Russell Strong, also known as the Walnut Queen of Southern California, joined with Clara Burdette, Alice Parsons, Emmy Parsons, and Francina Bartlett to found the E-Bell of Los Angeles, our city's first and longest-lasting nonprofit organization dedicated to the advancement of women in every branch of culture. Over the next four decades, our city's population doubled, then tripled, then quadrupled, with the E-Bell guiding its values, its philanthropy, and future every step of the way. In 1908, the E-Bell helped establish the Los Angeles Chapter of the Red Cross. In 1918, it established the Rest Cottage Association that provided care and wraparound services to women in need and continues to exist as a philanthropic and support system to this day. And in 1919, it established the E-Bell Scholarship Fund, which to this day supports the education and ambitions of students across Los Angeles. That same year was also an important year in our nation's history as well, because in 1919, 100 years ago, the United States Congress voted to enact the 19th Amendment, guaranteeing all women in this country the right to vote. The constitutional amendment was a culmination of a decades-long battle for women's suffrage. Leaders like Cady Stanton, LeCraze Amott, and Alice Paul, and millions of unsung heroes who marched, campaigned, and sacrificed to finally win for women's rights and for more just and equal nation. California, of course, had granted women's suffrage many years earlier, but as Los Angeles' leading institution for the education, empowerment, and advancement of all women, the E-Bell was a powerful force to help women and men imagine a more equal world improved by the political, cultural, and intellectual contributions of women. Throughout the 20th century and to this day, the E-Bell of Los Angeles will continue to lead the way for our city from its stunning clubhouse and theater on Wilshire Boulevard in Council District 4. It was where Amelia Earhart gave her final speech, where Judy Garland was discovered by MGM, and where in 2010, First Lady Michelle Obama inspired a generation of leaders. Thanks to the E-Bell, ours is a city of empowerment and equality, a city of uplifting people, not keeping them down, and a city that leads our state and our nation to a more just and equal society. Now to also say a few words, I'd like to invite up my council colleague, Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Ru, and thank you for inviting me to be part of this really special presentation. And I'd like to thank all the women and gentlemen behind me for helping to continue a legacy that is so important to Los Angeles' history, but more importantly, to assuring that our continued advocacy for ensuring women's rights and assuring that the strength of our voices are not going to be undermined. And so I'm proud to join you on this remarkable 125-year anniversary with the rich history of supporting women. It's really been a phenomenal, you know, I've been to the E-Bell many times for many wonderful events and festivities, and it's just been a location that has, again, when you think about all of the rich cultural history that you mentioned, it's just such an important part of who we are as Angelinos and who we are as members of our greater United States of America community. And so I'd like to thank them and give them a round of applause for continuing this leadership and example for all of these years. Not that you've been around for 125, each of you, you all look fabulous, but thank you for continuing this very important legacy and tradition. What I also want to mention in their trailblazing efforts that has not yet gone remarked is that it was 100 years ago that members of the E-Bell created the Rest College Association, Cottage Association, which was home for, that served as a refuge for women in need, women that needed housing, women that needed placement. And so they were the trailblazers when we come to the times that we're experiencing now. They were at the forefront of these issues many years ago, and they continue to bleed by example. And so it's with that that I'm very honored to join you in commemorating and celebrating this remarkable anniversary for their ongoing years of service to the city of Los Angeles, but for being trailblazers and leading with heart, with kindness, and with all the due respect that women deserve. So congratulations on 125 years. Thank you all very much for your example of leadership and your commitment. You know, it's hard doing extra volunteer work on top of everything else that I know all you professionals are involved in. And I know some of these members, and they're remarkable mothers and civically engaged. And so it's really special that you've kept this tradition alive here for the city of Los Angeles, and I thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. A trailblazer in your own right. Thank you so very much for your amazing words. Next, I am proud to welcome the President of the E-Bell of Los Angeles, and that's Ginger Barnard.
Well, Councilwoman, first of all, to the City Council and to Councilwoman Ru, thank you so much for inviting us here to add to the celebrations of our 125 years of service to Los Angeles and 25 years of empowering women. The history lesson that Councilwoman Ru gave us means I don't have to give a speech. But what I would like to do is, on this Sunday, September 22nd, the E-Bell is hosting an open house. And I would like to invite all of you to come to our historic clubhouse, built in 1927 and designed by Sumner Hunt. And from 3:00 to 5:00, we have an open house, and you can see our beautiful historic building and learn more about what we do, and hopefully, some of you would join. And yes, we do have gentleman members. But thank you so much. It's a real honor to be here today, and it's an honor for me to be President of the E-Bell because it is such a dynamic group of women. We have almost 600 members, and it's a real force in the community. But thank you so very much. And the other thing I must mention, our building is 125 years old. You can imagine, it needs a little work. So we do have, we do have, have launched a legacy campaign to raise funds for the preservation and restoration of this clubhouse. So thank you so much.
Thank you so very much, Ginger. And for anyone who's hearing, who's hearing this presentation on TV, yes, if you want to get involved, if you want to come to the open house, this is an amazing organization. I mean, this is one of the top venues for weddings, and as well as many other important events, nonprofit events. Just this past week, I attended their scholarship ceremonies where they had previous scholars from decades long ago come back and give back to the scholarship fund. But this is a very important institution, and I do want to highlight again how many of us in this horseshoe are so proud of the various bridge home and homeless housing that we are able to champion and open in our districts. Again, it was the E-Bell, it was the ladies of the E-Bell who beat us to the punch 100 years ago to open up the very first place of refuge for those experiencing homelessness, poverty, whether it be women or men. So I want to again thank you for everything you've done, and I want to say thank you to Ginger. And I didn't realize, when I first met her a couple of years ago, but Ginger, in her previous life, was the chief protocol officer for the Los Angeles County. I know Council President Wesson knows her very well. She set the standard. I mean, she greeted kings, queens, any type of royalty or person of importance who came to Los Angeles City and County, she was the one that wrote the book on how to greet them and how to welcome them. So I want to say thank you to Ginger for all of her service in the past and service now with the E-Bell. Now with that said, I want to present this resolution, we would like to present this resolution, celebrating the E-Bell of Los Angeles for their 125 years of leadership and to the next 125. Thank you so very much.
Okay, we're going to go to, thank you, Mr. Ru. We are now going to go to some general public comment. Start with Mr. Sean Murphy. And Sean, you have cards in for item one and for general public comment. Please come on up.
Item one, item one, I'm supporting. General public comment. The streets need to be repaid, especially in my, in the third, Sean Murphy of the third district. The streets need to be repaid on Roscoe and all of the streets. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for the record, there are two motions that have been posted and circulated for item number 24, and that's motion 24C and D.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to general public comment. Chris Roth. Chris has a general public comment card and I believe one for item 18.
Good morning, counsel.
Sorry, Chris, I'm going to start you over. We'll just do the general public comment now, and then we'll have you come up for the item 18, the vacancy tax, a little bit later.
Oh, in that case, I'll just wait till 18.
Okay. Francisco Martinez.
I'm also here to comment on item 18. Should I wait?
Yes.
All right. I'll see you later.
So, okay, we're going to call up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you have cards for items 1, 18, 20, and 24.
It's good to see you at the big chair, sir. What is going on with the festive balloon? Is it somebody's anniversary? Mr. Lee, congratulations, Mr. Lee. It's very nice to see that we're celebrating. I wanted to, first of all, concur at how close Herb Wesson is to Raul Claros and that group, the Latino Coalition, and how effective it is to put it on a presentation as opposed to the agenda, so nobody knows except for the folks who are going to be honored, so that if people want to kind of question or engage in that, especially when the annoying guy in chief is in town, it's just very, very subtle. And thank you, Mr. Fabel, for your attention. I'd like to just say that the Doc Wyler Beach, where we've settled a lawsuit yet again, this one for only 150,000, I want to give credit to Court B. Purdy, the attorney.
I believe right now you're up for items 1, 20, and 24.
Yeah, but this is the closed sessions that you just announced.
No, no, the closed session items were already handled in committee. The public comment was satisfied, and it's already been voted.
Well, then I'll talk about Prop 68. I know that Krikorian would like to think of ways to spend that water and bond money, and one idea is to lump it into a giant un-green building that's technically green, but putting a green building in an open space in Studio City is a complete abnegation. What's worse is that this has been done virtually without outreach to the community, so that they are literally taking the position that it's already been decided. And how many people in Los Angeles can experience that, where the city announces, rolls out, takes charge in some way that has been completely under the radar? And that is because of minimum requirementalism, where people just refused, they refuse to really do the outreach that they know how to do. If they want to bring people down here in force, they know how to do it. They don't do that because they want to slip it by undetected. And it's going to ruin our open space in Studio City, and I'm not going to stand for it. And neither will my neighbors, because we have, we've had it. We have really had it. Now, Prop 68 is not a weapon, just to be clear. Now, on your agenda today, you have three business improvement districts, all being rolled through. Yesterday, Mr. Bon, where do you go? Put, I don't know, maybe five preferential parking districts when there was nobody around, expanding the difficulties for people who are looking for a place to park and go to work or a place to park and just rest. And yesterday at the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Fabel, I'm sure you were there.
So I'm a bit confused as to what item you're on. Again, it's 1, 20, 24.
Did you call me for the general public comment or not, included?
Would you like to go to general public?
No, I'm not going to give up my 35 seconds. We played that game last week.
Okay, let's just speak to the item, and then we'll do general public comment to speak to the item.
Well, sir, now you've confused me once again. And I know that we were looking forward to equal prize money for men and women, and I would like to say thank you for that. I don't think there's any reason to have a different prize size.
Again, that's an item.
Let's give him his general public comment.
All right, fine, but in terms of the empty stock, I think that people should not be allowed to cling to profitable deal. Private equity and corporations are the ones who benefit from retaining units that they're not renting or giving out to folks to stay. It's a real problem, because what we have is a homelessness crisis. And I think yesterday, some of you were involved. It was a terrible, terrible day for CD10, sir, as well, because... It was a terrible, terrible day for CD10, sir, as well, because Sheila Kuehl said, "We can't sign on to Martin v. Boise. That's just inhumane." And then Hilda Sillie said, "I agree." And Catherine Barger said, "Well, I'd really like to." And Janice Hahn said, "Yeah, I agree." And then it all came down to Mark Ridley Thomas. And just months away from an election, this guy let down all of his constituents, causing people to wonder, "Who else is running for CD10?" Because this man has crossed the line. Everybody expected, the man who's working with Gavin Newsom, leading some kind of a homeless charge, just took a step directly in the wrong direction. And it really, it was palpable in the room, the way people felt so disenfranchised after the bullshit last week, where he was taking credit for shutting down the jail. Just very sad. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Gus, you have item 20 and general public comment. Yes, sir.
Item 20, yeah. You know what? I'm just going to go for general. Leave 20 alone.
Okay, let's give him his startest time all over.
Thank you. Council, I'll be on KABC 790 radio tonight at 8:00 during Peter Tilden's show, and I'll be there to discuss my recent legal win, my new lawsuit against the city, and my next lawsuit against the city. Please tune in, because I'm also going to be talking about what I believe is an existential threat to Black Los Angeles, which I would believe is Mr. Wesson's candidacy for LA County Supervisor. I think that is the biggest threat to Los Angeles, based on the conditions in the city. I don't think that they should be spread to the county, and I think this morning was a perfect example of Mr. Wesson's selling out African Americans. He spoke in Spanish on this presentation this morning, and that was fine, but he didn't say one word about the Afibas Center going down last week, when there were dozens of people here. Black Los Angeles, you are having an existential threat by Mr. Wesson. You may want to choose somebody else for County Supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Corretts.
Hello. Happy anniversary, I think.
Thank you very much. How are you? Nice to see you. Nice to see you.
Well, friends and colleagues, thank you for joining us on the third year in a row to talk about ovarian cancer. It is one of the deadliest gynecological cancers, and it's so important that we keep this conversation going, not just here, but at home with every one of the women that we know. You may have noticed that we're wearing the color teal, the national color of ovarian cancer awareness, which occurs every September nationwide. Here in Los Angeles, for the third year in a row, we are declaring Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Los Angeles, and for the second year, Los Angeles City Hall and the LAX pylons will be turned teal starting tonight. More than 22,000 women are diagnosed each year with a 50% mortality rate. Part of its high mortality rate is the detection usually comes too late, and for those who fight it off successfully, it has a 50% chance of reoccurring. Ovarian cancer can happen to women of any age, so all women should not only be aware of the symptoms, but so should all men. As a husband and a father, I'm so grateful for the tireless commitment of these incredible people joining us today, who are focused every day on the battle against ovarian cancer and the efforts to raise awareness. First, let's hear from Councilmember Martinez from CD6 to join us in this effort.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Thank you very much, and thank you for recognizing Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month this month. I think a lot of women, particularly those who not often take the time to take care of their bodies, or making sure, to make sure that they actually notice some of the symptoms. It's very important that as much as we take care of everyone else, that we begin to take care of ourselves. And as a woman, I can tell you that any woman can get ovarian cancer at any age, but I think one of the things that we often don't talk about are the symptoms associated to ovarian cancer, like bloating, constipation, nausea, lasting fatigue, are some of the symptoms associated to ovarian cancer. And as women, we need to start listening to our bodies. If I can, if I'm, I'm well aware of the fact that sometimes we can all go and think that we can go for 14-hour days without listening to our own bodies, and I can tell you firsthand that sometimes your body will make you aware that you've had enough. And so, I've had some, you know, health scares myself for the last two years. I'm very lucky that I've listened to my body. Unfortunately, sometimes I run myself into the ground, but at the same time, I have to recognize that I can't do everything, and that sometimes we just need to take a moment and recognize some of these symptoms and get to the doctor as soon as possible. So, I want to not only recognize Mr. Corretts for leading the charge on ovarian awareness month. Every single year since I've been on this council, you have led this effort, and I want to thank you for all your efforts and all these amazing women from the ovarian cancer circle. Thank you very much, ladies, for being here. And again, I cannot reiterate enough that sometimes, as women, we tend to take care of everyone in our family but ourselves. And sometimes our bodies will give out, but we need to make sure that we get up again, because we're the only ones that make everything happen at home anyways. So, we need to make sure that we're healthy. Can we just, yes, can we just make, yes, we always make it possible. And so, again, thank you very much to the ovarian cancer awareness circle and to Mr. Corretts for allowing us to share this moment and to reiterate to all women of all ages the importance of recognizing these early symptoms and getting yourself checked out. Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Martinez, and next, we would like to have Councilmember Rodriguez join us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts and Ms. Martinez, and thank you to the women behind me for helping to be great stewards of this cause and to continue to raise the awareness. It's so important. You know, we know that cancer is indiscriminate, and it really doesn't matter who you are, but the reality is, is that we recognize that it also impacts so many women at such early ages, and without regular screenings, we will succumb to these types of ailments and not catch them early. And so, it's really important that women take the call to assure that they're getting their proper screenings. This is not something that is detected by a traditional pap smear. And so, having the gynecological exam that is going to help expose the potential of having ovarian cancer is something that is really important, that you go with your, seek your physician's help, and with that intentional request of getting this screening, because if you do experience those symptoms, you need to go get checked. And as Councilwoman Martinez mentioned, so often, the matriarchs of our family go without taking care of themselves. I think she and I are both examples of that. We don't often take the kind of care of ourselves that is required, but we do need to make sure that we are getting checked, that we are protecting ourselves, protecting our families, but more importantly, that we're sharing with more of the communities throughout Los Angeles the importance of these screenings and the importance of making sure that these women are getting checked. Just as we have continued with so many other cancers to assure that people get the proper screenings, this is one that, again, doesn't matter your age, it doesn't matter your ethnic group, you, we are all exposed to this and to the potential of having this, and so we need to make sure that as women, we protect one another, that we help and advocate and educate one another about this important gynecological screening. And so, ladies, I thank you very much for continuing your advocacy and promoting the awareness, so that we can assure that no other women will succumb to this terrible experience and disease. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Now, once again, we're joined by Paulinda Babini, the founder of the Ovarian Cancer Circle, which was inspired by her devastating loss of her daughter, Robin, at the young age of 20 years old. Since that day, Paulinda's been on a mission to gather up her heartbreak on behalf of all the daughters, sisters, aunts, and mothers who have been struck by this disease and put it to work. Through this nonprofit organization, Paulinda's made ovarian cancer education and fundraising her life's mission. She's a tremendous force, and I'm pleased to continue to partner with her and her team. And so, it is a great honor for me to introduce Paulinda to all of you to say a few words.
Good morning, President Wesson, Councilmember Corretts, Martinez, and Rodriguez. On behalf of the Ovarian Cancer Circle's dedicated team, myself and Dr. Mamarzadeh, we thank you so much for recognizing today as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day and for the third consecutive year. We are also extremely grateful for the second consecutive year to have the City Hall and the iconic LAX pylons illuminated in teal, the national color of ovarian cancer. This is truly an honor. Today's prominent recognition certainly helps increase and further this awareness. Ovarian cancer is a very difficult cancer to diagnose, as both Councilmember Martinez and Rodriguez mentioned, and is even more challenging to be treated successfully. The Circle's bookmark, which is on all of your desks, lists the symptoms and how to be proactive for women's health care. It's been a useful tool for many women in catching this cancer at much earlier times, significantly improving the survival rate. The Circle will continue its vital mission to educate and raise funds for this critically needed early detection test. To date, we've raised almost $700,000 for ovarian cancer research. Thank you. I truly believe, if I had known then what I know now, Robin would be here today to tell the story herself. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Paulinda. Next, please allow me to introduce Dr. Sanaz Mamarzadeh. She's a professor in the Department of Obstetrics and Gynecology at UCLA and the director of the GeoDiscovery Laboratory. She's also a leading-edge scientist and ovarian cancer surgeon. She's treated countless women with this disease and had a profound influence on both her medical practice and her research. She now joins us to discuss the ongoing challenges in ovarian cancer research and the possibility of future treatments that could one day lead to a cure.
Thank you so much. It's truly an honor and a pleasure to be here. I'm grateful for the opportunity that you're giving us. Thank you for recognizing this day as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day. I'm a cancer surgeon at UCLA, and also, I'm very grateful to be able to serve our women veterans at the West Los Angeles Hospital. And my career has very much focused on taking care of women who are diagnosed with gynecologic cancers, ovarian cancer, but also, as discussed, I have a basic science research laboratory focused on studying ovarian cancer and other gynecologic cancers. We at UCLA work together. We are a team, and we're all committed at UCLA Health, the Johnson Comprehensive Cancer Center, the Broad Stem Cell Research Center. These are all places where I have affiliations, and I work together with a group of amazing clinicians, amazing scientists, and together, we are focused on advancing the mission of gynecologic cancer care and also gynecologic cancer research. And I'm incredibly proud of my, I'm incredibly proud and grateful of my affiliation with Paulinda and the amazing group of women that you see here today, who have done a tremendous job of raising awareness about ovarian cancer, talking about signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer, and also allowing us to have this incredible opportunity with the City of Los Angeles, which is tremendous. But most importantly, I'm so proud of my patients who have battled this disease, women who are survivors of this cancer. Our mission is to be here with you, and we want to walk you through this journey, and I hope that the work that we do helps you through clinical and also research. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Also here with us today is Flower Miller. Flower was here with us two years ago, and she's both an ovarian cancer survivor and an active volunteer in the ovarian cancer circle, working hard to bring awareness. I've invited her back to City Hall to say a few words, and I might add that if there's anyone here who's suffered from ovarian cancer personally or in your family, I invite you to please stand and be recognized. And I don't know if there is anyone in that category, but Flower?
I'm here.
There you are.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me this morning, and thank you so much for your continued support of ovarian cancer awareness. My name's Flower Miller, and I'm 46, married, have three children. We live in Venice, and I was diagnosed with stage III C ovarian cancer April 24th of 2014. Devastating diagnosis, of course, but I was luckily referred immediately to Dr. Sanaz Mamarzadeh at UCLA, who I wanted to be aggressive with my treatment and do whatever I could to survive this, and the terrible stats, five-year survival stats are not very good. I went through chemotherapy and surgeries and got myself into remission, and just this past April, I beat the five-year survival mark, so I've been, been in remission beyond five years now and with no recurrence, happy, healthy, and my family is thriving. And I guess just given that I'm sort of the face of ovarian cancer survivor today, with me comes my story, my, you know, my children, my friends, my family, and an entire community that has been impacted by not so much my diagnosis, but more so my survivorship and what I've been able to contribute in those five-plus years since my diagnosis. So, for me, it starts with awareness, and so, it's so, I'm just so honored that I'm here to talk five and a half years later and that you guys are recognizing that. So, thank you.
So, unless we have any speakers on the queue, I would like to present a certificate, first of all, to Flower Miller and congratulate her on her five-year mark. And also, on behalf of the City Council, and joined by Ms. Rodriguez and Martinez, we would like to present a certificate and declare today Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. And everybody should look for City Hall to turn teal later tonight. And the LAX pylons, of course. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's get Cory. Cory Schmidt.
Corey Schmidt. 118, 20, and 24 in your general public comment.
Okay, I'm here. Number one and 20, talking about cul-de-sacs. I agree. I believe we should grip those balls and shut it down. Talking about, I think we should use the Jews, have the good eat the bad. Talking about slavery, coming from the 5G that's coming. Fire departments, I agree, they should get cameras in case they see something sketchy. They should be able to say something. You know, speaking about slavery.
So, Mr. Smith, most of those items were handled in committee, and they're not open for public comment, so the ones that you can talk on are 1, 18, 20, and 24. You can talk about anything you want related to the city in general public comment, but not in this part.
Why we, why aren't we taking care of all black people? That's all I'm saying. Okay, so, number 18, in regards to the empty unit penalties for these Luciferian fuckbags who are taking over my territory. They're coming in here and they're building all this stuff, building these high-rise buildings, but then they don't fill them with anything. There's no people in them, half-empty. They deserve some penalties. Number 10 is not on the list, I see. So let's go, let's talk about, I want to move for nightly street cleaning on Pico Boulevard. Push for the Transportation Committee to put a left turn light on southbound Barrington at Palms. Want to talk about people merging properly on the freeway, because that's where we get all the traffic from. So, gonna move into my general public comment. Let's talk about the plan of these Satan worshippers. Talking about evil cancer earlier, I agree, there is an evil cancer here. They're trying to take our free speech away, pulling feeds to mics, pulling the mic away. They want to take away our guns so that we can't fight back. This is the plan. Taking away our guns leads to increase in violent crime. Check out Argentina and Guatemala. Look at all the other countries across the world that took away the guns. Violent crime has increased because the criminals know that people don't have guns. Civilian ownership of guns threatens the power structure of these evil fuckbads. The plan is to register and ban semi-autos next. They're gonna leave us with single shots only. I think it's bad. I think we need to fight. I think we need to fight.
Let's get Ms. McAllister. Items 18, 20, 24 in your general public comment. Please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. President. Let's go with item number 20. You want to exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act this act for this property, vacant E 140 1181, vacation. Now, I'm having problems with all of these exemptions to the Environment Quality Act, because when I go into stores, different places, I see signs that says, beware, coming here in this building causes cancer. This is because you're exempting all of these quality, environmental quality acts, saying that these properties or developments don't need to abide by the quality acts, and then you later throw up a sign saying, beware, you get cancer if you come in here. That's not going to work. We don't need to be exempting them from these quality environmental acts. We need to hold them accountable for what they're doing, and then they cannot build unless they abide by these acts. I just find it appalling to go into food establishments saying that you'll catch cancer if you come up in here. Now, here's another thing. Item number 18, housing units, what you want to do is have a report for potential empty housing penalty structures in Los Angeles. All of these agendas, I see things you're gonna do with housing. You're not doing a darn thing but putting them on the agenda. You have a 10-year period for HHH, you haven't built one. People laying all on the street, all over the city. My president is in town to see this mess, and I am glad he is here, President Trump. And I see you've torn down some vacant, well, some encampments overnight when you found out the president was coming. I've seen it. So he's here, we're gonna hold you accountable.
I think we veered off the agenda.
This affordable, I'm talking about number 18, affordable housing. This is the housing committee. I go to these housing committees. They do nothing. They don't care what we say when we speak. They vote regardless of what we say. You're not building anything. You're not doing anything. Billions of dollars come from Washington DC to this city, and to see that you're not using the money. Everywhere I go, you're building more and more 40, 50-story buildings with these high developers. You're not building any affordable housing. I want this housing committee dismantled. I want it, we want it broken up. This housing committee is a joke. I go to those committee meetings, I stop going because they do nothing. They spend 15 to 20 minutes listening to us, vote what they want to vote on, and we leave. And one thing I don't like about these housing committees either is they are ignoring fines. They're giving relief to companies who owe millions of dollars, saying, okay, they're not gonna pay us. And I ask them, I say, well, who is the, where is this money coming from? You want to, you want to exempt me from paying a million dollars? So your buddies, you're telling them they don't have to pay these housing fees and all these fees they're supposed to be paying. A lot is going on in this city, and we're gonna break it down. And like I said, I want my people off of Skid Row.
Okay, your general.
Now, as I said, my president is in town, President Donald Trump. He is here, and I'm very proud he's here. I've been asking for him to come, and he's especially going through Skid Row. And I want the people of this city to get a carpool and drive through those 54 blocks of homeless black people. 54 blocks. Now, people, you see people on the street. You haven't seen the real homeless. The real homeless, the 65,000, are inside the shelters. Those are children. Martinez and Rodriguez talking about these illegal alien children. What about the black children in these homeless shelters living on Skid Row and all over this city and this state and this country? Those are the children I'm concerned about. If you don't want those illegal alien children taken from their parents, tell them to stay out of this country. If they don't stay out of this country, whatever happens to them, they deserve it, okay? My people are laying on the street. We've got black children all over, everywhere, living on Skid Row, living in foster homes, and you're telling me to be concerned about some people who broke into this nation illegally with their children, and DNA tests showed most of these children are not even related to the people who come in there with them.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Ms. McAllister, thank you. Rob. Rob Klon. Rob, you have items 1, 18, and 20 in your general public comment.
Good morning. I'm here to speak on behalf of the vacancy tax. About seven, eight years ago, I lived in Los Feliz. When I moved in, it cost me $1,000 and $1,045 a month for a studio. And I had to move out after a few years, and I look back two years ago to see that same unit, and it's $1,900 a month. Obviously, rent is going up astronomically, but just two years ago in the city of, in downtown LA itself, we had a 12% vacancy rate. The vacancy tax is a, you know, the way that we can actually encourage housing to go back onto the market. I hope we actually get it on the ballot. I want to move to my general public comment. And on that note, this council has spoken repeatedly about its disdain for Citizens United and support for increased disclosure. Our federal government banned corporate contributions half a century ago, yet here in the city of angels, we embrace dark, unaccountable corporate money, apparently ending that as a step too far. The city attorney transmitted a number of ordinances yesterday, and they basically left out the non-individual ban. I find that really, really peculiar, when that really makes it difficult for that to get on the ballot in March of 2020, which means that when Mike Fure runs for mayor in 2022, he can take as much corporate money as he wants. Democracy dies behind darkness, and he didn't arrive at that decision on his own. I highly doubt the city attorney arrived at that decision on his own. That wasn't a legal decision, it was a political decision.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you. Let me get Mr. Herman.
So there's a $5,000 issue here regarding item B, temporary closure of a walkway that will reduce criminal activity. Never heard of such a thing regarding Heimwitz Laura, the dumb cunt. What about item E? Heimwitz Laura vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Sounds like a TRO bitch on the street contribute to the criminal activities. So the physical impact statement for $5,000 sounds like five years, cunt. So I must be absorbing the cost because according to my mental disability, I understand the approximate five-year, $5,000 TRO bitch for public easement by the city forces are evil and eliminate free speech regarding Woodbine and Manning Avenue, cunt. Then I have to go to the items that I subjected myself to. Item 24, that text about, that text about, that text about, EDA, not the FBI, but the non-EDA Economic Development Funds, in which the city has stolen public, private, nonprofit monies of government entities. That's why America is so fucked up. Subject to the city, again, your mayor, not mine, because my mayor doesn't take it up the ass. Thank you, Trump. So you see, we're here to instruct the general manager that Donald Trump wants goals of evaluation to the framework of your grant applications and your bonds, in which you have discriminated against people with disabilities. So according to Ad hoc, I want the cocksucker of this comprehensive job creation to know, just because I'm dark in skin, motherfucker, I can't read. So to receive and file, because the cunt is on topic, April 4th, 2019, on behalf of the President of the United States, 42 USA, 1983, thank you, Donald Trump, and thank you, Ben Carson. Fuck the city of Los Angeles.
Give him his one minute.
So, 0950529 for the record is my free speech. Let's this country be fucked for another four years? Because never in history has a black person done anything right. Have I? I'm black. Have I done anything right to get five-year temporary restraining order because I'm fucking black and you retaliate against me with a restraining order? Has a person done anything right besides me? Watts versus the Supreme Court. I have got to report for my physical because of my mental disability this Monday coming. I'm not going. If I ever make or carry a rifle with that TRO on my back, I will shoot the first man I want to get in my sight. ID at 706, the courthouse. Mommy, take those fucking flowers to your hubby.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, items 1, 18, 20, and 24.
Now, how about that? That's right. So let's get to this nigga shit on the agenda. Number one, we got this Jew cock nigga over here, this big fat Coretts over here, trying to goddamn temporarily closing my street on Woodbine where I sell crack to the fucking local Jew students at the school. That's how I pay my rent, Herb. You know that.
Stay on topic.
So I, nigga, I'm a number one. I'm a number one.
Look, you stay on topic or you're gonna go to general public comment.
I'm trying to talk, nigga. I'm talking about the Coretts motion, I'm number one.
Give him his general public comment.
And no, 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 motherfucker. I just, I'm still on my time. You're not gonna violate me. You're not gonna silence me. You are not going to emasculate my words. I don't care what suit you wear. I don't care what tie you wear. You're just niggas, and I'm just a motherfucker here trying to speak. Now, today, and I know it's somebody's wedding anniversary, now, I'm trying to be all nice, but you, bud, take my fucking time. Now, what's we got here, jive, motherfucker? You over here talking Espanol. What about the black folk? You skin look black to me? I thought you represent black, but apparently you sold out. You even sold your son's soul over there to make half motherfucking black people. You just nothing but a giant turkey, motherfucker. You're just a giant turkey, motherfucker.
Your time is up. Okay, let's vote on item one. Let's open the roll, close the roll. Whoa, 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 whoa. Mr. Coretts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm proud that the community in this area has reached a compromise, and so I'd like to read in the following conditions. An 18-month closure with a gate that is accessible by a key code and keys for first responders and the two adjacent property owners. Also, there will be a unique key code which will be available to all neighboring residents upon request. Residents assigned to key code must sign a sworn statement that their holder will not disclose this code to any person not in their household. The CCCHA Board Safety Committee will maintain the list of key, code key holders. A camera may be used, and records would only be accessible in the event of an incident. And the CCCHA will pay all costs.
Wait a minute, Mr. Coretts, stop. We have a disturbance. Mr. Spindler? Go ahead, Mr. Coretts.
The CCCHA will pay all costs to purchase, install, maintain, and monitor the use of the gate and lock. Thank you.
Okay, that's his amendment. Does he need to have a second, Mr. Harris Dawson? Let's now prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's reconsider 2, 3, and 4 ordinances. So you want to read those, Madam Clerk?
2, 3, and 4 are the ordinances related to the business improvement districts.
Let's prepare to vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's actually vote on the issues. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Mr. President, there's a request for 2, 3, and 4 to go forthwith, sir.
So ordered. Let's go to item 18. Item 18, did you want to set it up, Mr. Bonin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. There are times in this chamber where the rapid movement from one issue to another and the type of public testimony can almost give me the bends, but let me try to shift the conversation from the tenor where it was going to the subject of the affordable housing crisis in Los Angeles. We, there's not a single day, I think, where any of us escape a conversation about the affordable housing crisis. We talk to tenants every day who are We talk to tenants every day who are being evicted, or people who are having difficulty finding a place to live, or finding an opportunity to make ends meet. And there are constant conversations about affordable housing in Los Angeles, and, and constant battles about the, whether or not we need to build additional housing and additional density. And whenever there is a conversation between both sides on that, the conversation stops and the conversation breaks. Because those who say we do not need additional housing, say, why do we need additional housing? There are tens of thousands of vacant units throughout the city of Los Angeles. And those who are skeptical of additional housing want us to address the issue of, of all these vacant units. And those who are eager for any additional unit possible want us to address the issue of vacant units. We have seventy, over seven hundred thousand renter households that are severely rent burdened in Los Angeles, paying more than fifty percent of their income towards housing. At the same time, in the county of Los Angeles, we have over two hundred thousand vacant housing units, and about a hundred thousand of them are in the city of Los Angeles. Now, in other cities, in Vancouver, in Paris, in Washington, D.C., and in Oakland, they have all instituted a form of an empty homes penalty. An assessment or a penalty on someone who is holding a vacant habitable unit for no good reason off the market. And in Vancouver, this has resulted in fifteen percent of their vacant units being returned back onto the market. Imagine if we were able to do something, that we were able to put fifteen thousand units back onto the rental market here in Los Angeles, a lot faster than we could build fifteen thousand units. And in Oakland, they have.
Okay, wait, let's stop, Mr. Herman, you've disrupted this meeting enough. The last warning. Oh, Mr. Sargeant, let's remove Mr. Herman. We have very important business here. I have a lot of people that have come here to speak, not to put up with his foolishness. And Mr. Spindler, I just wanna hear you breathe, all right? So go ahead, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. In Oakland, where voters just recently approved a vacancy tax or an empty homes penalty, they estimated that in, in fees for non-compliance, they could raise about $10 million for affordable housing. Given the difference in our population, the difference in the scope of the problem, that here potentially could be a hundred million dollars that could be used for affordable housing, for rent subsidies, for eviction prevention. In order to do something like this here in Los Angeles, because of Prop. 218.
Hold on. Let's get him, let's get him removed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Herman is shouting all the way out disrupting our meeting.
Yeah, so he's still disrupting the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. In order to do something like this in the city of Los Angeles, just as they did in the city of Oakland, this is something that has to go to the ballot. It's too late to get anything onto the March ballot, so we'd be looking at doing something for next November's ballot, which means this council would need to act to put something on the ballot by June. So what this motion does is it asks us to, to get sufficient information to craft a proposal if we are interested in doing so. And it directs H Sid, with the assistance of City Planning, Building and Safety, Department of Water and Power, to report on the amount of vacant habitable housing units in the city of Los Angeles and the reasons why they remain vacant. And then it asks the C L A and the C A O and, and various staff to use that data and to work together on a proposal that we could put before the voters, to put an empty homes penalty on the ballot and return units back to the rental market and perhaps generate additional revenue for renter protections here in Los Angeles. There is an interesting coalition that has gone, gotten behind this. It is, there, there are a number of groups, and we'll hear some testimony here today from SCAMP, from, from Ground Game, from Power, from affordable housing activists around Los Angeles. We will also hear, there's also people here in support of it, from organizations like Abundant Housing, people from both sides of, of the different initiatives we have seen here in Los Angeles. In fact, in committee, we saw something which I don't think has happened before in the city of Los Angeles. I don't know that we'll often see it happen again. We're coming to the table at Housing Committee, we had representatives of C C A and D S A, both testifying on behalf of the same proposal. When you have a coalition that broad and that diverse and that, that, that much of a, an odd couple dynamic, that, that's definitely an idea worth pursuing. So with this motion approved today, if we approve it, as I would request, we can begin work on this, getting some actual data, getting some actual figures, and getting some actual information with which we can move forward with a, a more serious and more fleshed-out proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Council President. And I just wanna rise in strong support of this motion, and I really wanna thank Council Member Bonin for really framing the argument and setting the stage, as well as a lot of my colleagues who signed on to this as well. Councilman Bonin explained it well. This motion is very simple. We first, we hear all this talks about vacancies, empty units in the city of Los Angeles, and depending on who you talk to, that vacancy number changes and fluctuates. So the first part of this motion is literally, once and for all, give us a assessment of exactly how many empty units there are, how much vacancy there is, and secondarily develop, if you wanna call it a empty homes penalty or a vacancy tax that we can assess here in the City Council and possibly put forth to the voters. But I just really wanna make it clear, with the, we always focus on the thirty-six thousand homeless in the city of Los Angeles, fifty-eight thousand in the, in the county of Los Angeles, but the true number we should be really looking at is the, is, is the number that is stated in the motion and Councilmember Bonin talked about, and as the L A S A report stated, there are seven hundred and twenty-one thousand individuals who are economically unstable, who are spending more than fifty percent of their paychecks on rent. They are one or two paychecks away from being homeless. So that's the true number that we should really be focused on, and this is what gets to the heart of that problem, which will help address that problem. And I wanna be actually very clear that this motion isn't about punishing anyone or being punitive. But we, as a city, we must make it clear that housing is for people, not for investment portfolio, investment portfolios. So I wanna ask my colleagues to, to support this, and I am very much in strong support. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a no-brainer, and it's not the only place where we can create units without having to build them. I mean, we've looked at reining in home sharing, because we know thousands of units have been taken on the market that should be available to people that want to rent. This is another one of those situations. We'll bring in a certain amount of, of funding through this, but the greater goal is to put units back on the market. So if, between all the different things that we're doing, if we can put fifteen or twenty thousand units on the market without having to build them, but we can actually just take the actions to, to, in essence, create them almost out of thin air. These changes are absolutely critical if we wanna address our housing crisis and our homeless crisis in the quickest way, and the easiest way, and the most logical way. And this is, this is the ultimate no-brainer, and we absolutely have to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Bonin, both for bringing this forward, and also for the important discussion that we had in Housing Committee about it. I just wanna clarify, we did have a, a discussion about this in committee, and while the motion is framed as an empty homes penalty motion, we did have a discussion about finding ways to address this problem based on the reasons that there are vacancies. And that might include penalties, it might include other policy approaches as well, it might include incentivization, it might include having empty units on a database that might be able to be utilized for emergency shelter or other, many different policy solutions that might come out of having the data. And so I think the critical element is, as Mr. Ru said, identifying, first of all, what the stock is. We don't know. We don't have a clear answer about that yet. So identifying how much stock there is that's available, what the reasons are that there are vacancies, because they could vary from anything from being held for short-term rentals as an investment strategy, to the fact that the homeowner might not be able to afford to make the necessary repairs to be able to put it back on the market. So it, it could run the entire gamut. We don't have the first idea right now what those reasons are, or, and because we don't know what those reasons are, we don't know what the appropriate policy solutions are. So the first step needs to be this. It needs to be gathering the data, and then once we have the data available, we can make the appropriate policy recommendations to the voters, and enact some, probably even without going to the voters, right now. So, Mr. Bonin, thank you. I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Sadiya.
As frequently happens, I push my button before Mr. Kukorian spoke, and so I'll just attach myself to his comments. Because what we're short of in this discussion is the debate in the city of having the data so that we can make our policy determinations. There's vacancies for a whole range of, of reasons. There's houses that are vacant throughout our city for a whole range of reasons, but we don't know where they are, who owns them, and why they're vacant. That information is critical for us to then make the policy choices we have to make. I think we should be very clear, this is not about building one single new unit, but assessing and evaluating units that have been asserted to be available, and we need to know that information so that we can make decisions with respect to that, that impact the policy. All these are a series of actions to make sure that we are not leaving any stone unturned with respect to finding affordability and accessibility. But ultimately, in this city, we need a glut of development, first and foremost, of affordability. But we need housing at every level to make sure that everybody in the city that's stressed by rent or home mortgages has an opportunity to have access to an affordable unit. I support the measure.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, what I'm gonna do, we, we have a few, I don't know, about eight people here to speak on the, the issue, so if I could get Susan Hunter, Mickey Jackson, Chris Roth, Yelena, and Austin, please come forward.
Susan Hunter, Housing is a Human Right. I'm here today to say that we already have data that supports the theory that the glut of housing that we're looking at is occurring in the newly constructed market rate housing that the city is approving. If the city is going to approve things like density bonuses with the basis that we need more housing, then it's also reasonable to expect that those density bonuses and this market rate housing actually house people and not overseas investment. But that's the problem that we're facing right now. And I would recommend that if we're gonna look at a baseline as a, as a flashlight in the dark, we should be examining, if we have to use L E D W P information, the week between Christmas and New Year's. Because if we wanna get a real read on the people that are actually living here in, in the city, and who's actively involved in everyday participation in the city as a resident, that would be a clear idea as a baseline of the idea of what we're looking at for who's really here as a part of the city, working here, and who's here maybe four or five weeks out of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Jackson, followed by Chris Roth.
Mickey Jackson, A H F Housing is a Human Right. Thank you for this proposal. I hope we follow through and do it. As you pointed out, other cities are, and they've had a good result. The U N has warned us that allowing housing to be speculative investment erases its use as housing. And I think that's exactly what's happening here. The real estate journals themselves are a very good source of this information, if you go online and you read them. Among themselves, they discuss the extreme glut in luxury or market rate housing in Los Angeles. They talk about it, they talk about the percentages, and that they admit to, it's extremely high. The problem is, we do have a lot of empty places in L.A. We do not necessarily have a shortage of places people could rent. We have a shortage of places people can rent.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chris Roth, followed by Yelena Zeltzer. Are you here?
Good morning, Council. Chris Roth, Ground Game, Los Angeles. I just wanted to give you another quick statistic to go along with everything that Councilmember Bonin was talking about. There are, according to the Census Bureau, in 2017, there were forty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five problematically vacant, those being privately owned, permanently unoccupied, off-market units, in the city of Los Angeles. So that was just in 2017. And that is, you know, almost, it's a little over eight thousand more empty units than there were people counted as being unhoused in the city of Los Angeles in last year's L A S A count. This is a no-brainer, and I'm thrilled to see that this motion is getting the kind of support that it deserves from the council members, and I'm looking forward to seeing it make some progress and show up on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Yelena, followed by Austin. Austin, are you here? Okay, great. And Bill? Bill? Prizlukey, are you here? Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Yelena Zeltzer. I'm here on behalf of Unite Here Local Eleven. We represent over thirty thousand hospitality workers in Southern California. While providing excellent service to the millions that visit Los Angeles every year, our members struggle with housing at a time when many units sit vacant. We are excited to support an empty homes penalty, which will ensure that L.A.'s housing supply is used for Los Angeles residents that need a place to live, rather than taken off the market in the service of investment speculation. We're excited that this will provide additional funding potentially for the affordable housing working people desperately need. Thank you to Councilmember Bonin and others who are supporting this for leading this effort, and we look forward to continuing to push for this and other measures to address L.A.'s housing problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin Sayer, Bill, Prizlukey, Andrea Lynn Mateo, are you here? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, honorable city council, city staff, city leaders. Thank you very much for putting this item on the agenda and considering it. And we all know that we're in a housing crisis, a homelessness crisis, and there are a lot of opinions on how we solve those problems. There are a lot of earnest, well-intentioned, hard-working, and passionate people who have dedicated themselves to these issues, and oftentimes they find themselves at opposite ends of the aisle. You have folks who are concerned with existing current communities, and you have folks who are dealing with the realities that are to come. We all know that this has the possibility of increasing revenue to provide affordable housing. We also know has the possibility of curbing the current rental market to fill those existing units. But the third point that cannot be underestimated, and Councilmember Bonin made this one, is that the coalition that's building is bringing people together that have oftentimes been at opposite sides of the aisle, people who have been working against one another, who are now starting to work together for the first time, which is gonna allow us to have the energy and the people power to bring real solutions forward. Thank you very much for this consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill, followed by Andrea. Is Lynn Moss here? Lynn? Go ahead, sir.
Hi. Bill Prizlukey, People Organized for West Side Renewal. Reiterating what other folks have already said, we believe that this policy is something that needs to be taken on by the city, so we encourage the departments to get their reports in, and let's get moving on doing something about this problem. As a student of history, it reminds me personally of the stories from the Depression of food crops being destroyed as folks were also waiting on breadlines. It seems like we're in a similarly dysfunctional market right now, where something just isn't working. And as we know from the successes of the, of the New Deal, that's a good time for government to intervene. We need to do something about this problem. It doesn't make any sense that we have what our friends at Sage have told us is something like eight hundred million square feet of vacancy at a time when we have so many people on the street. And thank you, Councilman Bonin, for giving voice to a broad coalition of folks from the grassroots who have been talking about this issue. It's time we do something about it. Let's get moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrea.
Hello, everybody. My name is Andrea Lynn Mateo. I'm a student at Oxford on College, but I'm also here in behalf of ACE, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, and I speak to you today in support of agenda item eighteen. As mentioned earlier, there are currently one hundred thousand vacant units in the city of Los Angeles alone, and around forty-one thousand of those vacant units are problematically vacant, which means that they are either privately owned, permanently unoccupied, or off the market. Yet, there are currently thirty-six thousand houseless people within the city of Los Angeles. And with that many vacant units, I think that no one in Los Angeles should be houseless, and that there shouldn't be any problem or struggle to find housing. Therefore, I urge you to go through with this empty homes penalties motion so that we can move forward with more tangible steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Lynn.
Thank you. Good morning. Along with the vacant housing problem is, is the developers and their cronies here at the city council. The. and their cronies here at the city council. Specifically, Marquise Dawson, this guy with Dorset Village. Dorset Village is a problem. It is partially empty. It has 206 housing units that he has authorized the destruction of, increasing homelessness. Don't, yeah, you. Increasing homelessness to raise up 784 luxury units. Marquise Dawson, supposedly representing the people of South Los Angeles, the 8th District. You are authorizing this project. You are going to be putting out people on the street.
Thank you, sir. That concludes calls on this item. Mr. Harris, Dawson?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the public comment speaker who erroneously claims that there's support for a project at Dorset Village. In fact, this vacancy tax is one of the projects that we have in mind. It's true that the owner of that project has moved out over 100 people. We are not in support of a new development in that project. We have not signed off in support of it, and so we'd appreciate it if people in the community would actually read and research before they make claims and point at people in public.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Sir, did you sign up to speak?
I called up earlier and told to wait to talk on Item 18.
What, are you speaking on Item 18?
My last name is Martinez on 18.
18?
Yes.
Okay, state your name again.
Sure. My name is Frank Martinez. I am the Policy Director for the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Also, I'm in the SCAMF. Thank you. I'm here to talk on Item Number 18, which Councilmember Bonin has spoken about, along with others. We represent nonprofits and builders, the people who actually build affordable housing, and we're part of a broad coalition of other organizations and nonprofits that are advocating for more housing as we have an affordability crisis here in LA. Yes, we are in the middle of a housing crisis, and we all know the costs. Housing insecurity, evictions, strain on middle-class families, and homelessness. We've heard the numbers cited, 41,000, maybe 100,000, different ways to count it. Think about that for a moment, as others have pointed out. For every person living on the street, we could have, we have an empty unit of housing that could house someone. So, we know it's not that simple, but we can't overlook the one tool that we have, the best tool, which is housing that we've already built. So, we support this motion, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes speakers on Item 18. Let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So that item passes. Madam Clerk, I want to move to reconsider Item 26, Council File 14-1697-S5 from yesterday's council meeting. All right, two votes on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, then, item's now before us. Let's open the roll.
Madam President, since this is an ordinance with an urgency clause, since there are not 12 members present currently, it's best to continue this item to Tuesday, September 24th, please.
Very well. We'll continue the item till that day. Thank you. Let's move on to Item 24. Let's go ahead and vote on Item 24 as amended. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, I need to make a motion on this, but before I do, I just do want to note, so that we don't miss this point. This is something that the council has been working on for about seven years now. I think this process was initiated by Councilmember Garcetti, in fact. And after all of that work, and after the emphasis that the Economic Development Committee has put on this, as well as the Ad Hoc Committee on Jobs Creation, we now have before us recommendations for a five-year implementation plan of the citywide economic development strategy that will continue the momentum forward with the great progress that the city has made over recent years in creating jobs, reducing unemployment, bringing in investment, and otherwise thriving economically. But we have to make sure that that success continues to reach and does reach all Angelenos. So this is a five-year implementation plan that includes not only restructuring the city's economic development delivery structure, but it creates neighborhood and corridor revitalization projects. It focuses on equity. It supports economic empowerment. It increases workforce participation for underrepresented groups. It addresses gaps in the financial services that are available to people and businesses throughout Los Angeles, and bans or limits predatory lending. It integrates physical planning efforts and economic development objectives, especially around key industries and key areas where we want to develop jobs. It promotes diversity and entrepreneurship. It will begin marketing the city more effectively and supporting business expansion, and will streamline services and support for core industries. So, this is a very important, very significant step forward, and I want to thank all of the members who have served on the Ad Hoc Committee with me, as well as Mr. Price and all the members that have served over these many years on economic development and getting this to the finish line before us today. So with that, Madam President, I would adopt, I would move that we adopt Recommendation 24B, the Ad Hoc Committee's jobs report, as amended by the amendments, the written amendments that are before you now.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and vote on Item 24 as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Let's move on to Mr. Arnold Sachs. Are you here? You want to come up? Are you speaking today or not? Speaking on Items 20 and general public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Sachs?
I am speaking. I'm getting my thoughts together, sir. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your concern.
So, Mr. Sachs?
Let's give him his general public comment.
No, 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 no. I got it. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Just give him his general public comment.
So, somebody once said that if you don't have anything good to say, don't say anything at all. That was my speech. But I do have good news. I read recently that the state legislature has voted to eliminate, they're catching up to the city council, by the way. They are eliminating live animal acts in a circus. No more tigers and lions and things like that in circuses anymore, which is, if you're an animal lover, could be good. The city a couple of years ago eliminated elephant acts. They still haven't enacted the plan. It's a three-year plan. But, good news is, so if you go to, you go to a circus, you're not, you're gonna spend $25, maybe to see acrobats, but if you come here, you can see a circus for free that includes a dog and pony show. And if you like dog and pony shows, you can come here three days a week, and you can go to the County Board of Superbowl.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Thank you. Thank you, sir. If I could get Francisco Martinez, Laura Natoli, and Laura, I can't pronounce the last name, Laura, Tanya Edwards, Lynn Moses, Yelena Zeltzer, Marquesia Jackson, Ms. Pierce, I think it is, Jabari, just come forward and identify yourself. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tanya Edwards. And I'm here to talk about my community. I'm in the 8th District where, Marquise, you're representing my community. And I just want to ask you a question, because if you have any heart at all, surely you have gone down Crenshaw and seen all the devastation, and all of us Black people who are fighting to stay in our homes, and all the centers that we're getting thrown out the, you know, boxed. We don't have an AFEBA center anymore. We heard we don't have an AFEBA center anymore. Do you know about that? Because that's one of the one central spots that we do have for our Black community in the Crenshaw District, where we can advance and actually take the young people and help them to advance as well. Do you realize we got the richest Black community in America? That's what you represent. It will no longer be the richest Black community in America if you allow the things that have been taking place in our community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward. Identify yourself. Please. Name, and I, go ahead.
I'm Nagasha Jackson, and I'm here representing the Black community, the AFEBA Center, La Merck Park, where Mr. Marquise Dawson has turned his back on the Black agenda uplifting activities for the Black community. Also, Black lives really do matter. When you had the incident, when you got that gash across your eye, and you went to the hospital, you wanted adequate service and attention. It's disrespectful for everywhere we go as Black people, or people in general, to be disrespected, talked to, mocked, sent to jail. Then you get out. You can't get a job. You can't get an apartment. You can't get welfare. What can we get? Because your family hasn't made it to trouble, it's not too far before one of you guys' family be in the same situation. Have compassion. What do you really care about? Prove it. Act like it. We don't see it as a community. You're saying you're doing this, but we don't see nothing. You weak in my eyes.
Next person, identify yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Mrs. Holbert Pierce, and I want to address the email I received from Councilman Dawson, and it talked about his trip to DC. It talked about attending the Black Caucus Conference, and the mission was to advance the Black community globally, which should include Los Angeles. However, the AFEBA Community Cultural Center has received an eviction notice, and I'm sure you're unaware of it, but I want that eviction notice rescinded. They've been in the community 25 years. They are staple in our community, and we need the AFEBA Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself, sir.
Lynn Moses. Let's make, let's be clear. The AFEBA Center, the attack, Dawson's attack on the AFEBA Center has to do with one thing. The destination, his destination Crenshaw gentrification project, which they're destroying Black businesses all up and down Crenshaw Boulevard via the metro project to replace those businesses with residents and corporate, white corporate vendors, which there will be none. Case in point, again, one block down from the AFEBA Center, his billionaire contributor, the Dorset Village Project, where they want to raise that building to the ground and put those people out in the street. There will be no vendors on Crenshaw unless we authorize.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greetings. I am Jabari Akil. I have a program operating out of the AFEBA Center. I have been participating in community activities in the AFEBA Center for over 20 years, and approximately five years ago, returning to California, returning here home, I began operating a program at the center. It is diverse. There are many organizations inside. The community has an environment to come to and meet and discuss. Jabari has done an outstanding job of managing the structure and creating an opportunity for us all to come together. I have learned quite a bit about what goes on in Los Angeles as a result of the AFEBA Center, and I think that it should be allowed to stand.
Thank you. Thank you. Kimberly Tillman, RW, Jabari, Michael Greenspan, I lost my place, Abraham Farley Jr., Denise Curry. Yes.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Tillman, and I stand in honor of our late activist, Fannie Lou Hamer. I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. We are sick and tired as Black people in our community, watching it be destroyed. I have a business for 23 years on Vernon and Normandy. I live five minutes away. I live in the Crenshaw District on Jefferson and Crenshaw area. The oldest family there, 64 years, so I seen change. I am looking up and down Crenshaw, and my heart is breaking, because where do you see us? We are seeing us being dismembered. How would you like it if you see your community being amputated and hemorrhaging? Would you like that? The reason why I stand here for AFEBA Center is because my children have been able to be straight A students, not just in.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify.
RW Akil. The measure of a society is how it treats those who do work within that society. The AFEBA Center has been doing work for over 25 years. It is a foundation piece within the society. It does not need to be moved, or pushed around, or ignored. There is another spot up the street at the former Hyde Park Library that is sitting empty and can be used to put 120-foot edifice for your, of your designs. It can go right there, not at the AFEBA Center. Also, the islands that are in the middle of Crenshaw, just north of King Boulevard, that's a waste of money. Those islands didn't need to be there. You don't even realize that Crenshaw Boulevard from Adams and Crenshaw to La Merck Park represents the Nile River. It was something that your research team had not made themselves aware of. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Mike Greenspan, a Bruin butt-kicking Florida Gator. We're 3-0, and you Bruins are 0-3. See, we have the same numbers, just in different order. After all, we, a while back, we talked about raising the wage and everything else. Well, I recently went to eat at El Torito, and I'll kind of give you, you people that said, oh, prices won't go up. You're right. They don't go up. They just added another charge. It's called a labor surcharge. It started out as 3% in order to cover your extra minimum wage laws and regulations. Well, now they don't even label that at the 3%. They still have the labor surcharge on the bill, but it's now gone up to 3.5%, and I could do the math. I'm a gifted student. I didn't go to school in the LAUSD, so you're right. The prices won't go up. They'll just add another charge. It's called a surcharge. It's like Herb Wesen saying, no new taxes, and then he increases the existing ones. They're not new ones. They're existing ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ms. Ramirez, if you would get in line as well. Yes, sir.
Greetings. My name is Jabari Jomani. I am the Director of the AFEBA Center in South Los Angeles. I'm a resident of the 8th District. I am a stakeholder in the 8th District. I vote in the 8th District. I live in the 8th District. I object to the letter of eviction, the letter of eviction that we received at the end of August. For 20 years, it's been my passion to work through the AFEBA Center to better the social circumstance of African-Americans. I want to make it very clear that I am open at any time to talk to the councilmen about ways we can rectify this before this gets out of hand and too big. Definitely, it is most definitely getting too big and out of hand. So definitely, I would love to talk to any one of the councilpeople who would lend support to us maintaining our social structure and our institution as it is, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Denise Curry. I live and work in the 8th District. This is my first time addressing a governmental body, so I don't have facts and figures. I just have to speak from my heart. The other day, I heard someone say that Black youth have no hope, and it really made me feel sad, because I don't ever hear Asian youth have no hope, or Latino youth have no hope, or all the other... hope, or all the other myriad of races of children that are in this city that have no hope. It's our children that, they say, have no hope. And if you tell someone enough they have no hope, they begin to believe it. But we do not have, we, we do have hope, and we do have a cultural history and spirit, and we want to save our community center. I work at Caress Unity Center, and it's also a community center in the 8th District. We want to save the places that give us hope, love, spirit, and culture.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
My name is Abraun Farley Jr., Afktown Coalition. This is the 8th District of, over there on Crenshaw, Slauson, the Afeba Center. We need the Afeba Center. And they, since I've been to the community 50 years over there, they never had a center till that came. And it's 25 years of existence, so we don't need no eviction from the city to take away our Afeba Center. So, I'm talking to Harris Dawson. We need you not to, and the city to take away the Afeba Centers. So, we don't want, the, the, it was going down with the metro, the development down there, the white developers. We don't want nobody to take our businesses, because I heard 100 businesses been taken away since 2015.
More than that.
More than that, plus. So, since our partner, Dawson's been in office, and that's a deficit, that's like, that's war. So, we ain't taking that shit no more. Save the Afeba Center.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, you want to speak? Anybody else from the center that I didn't call your name, please come up now. Just identify yourself.
My name is Brandy Brown. I'm also a resident of the 8th District. And I'm just in support of the Afeba Center. I'm a member of the Afeba Center. I'm a member of the La Merck Park community. We love our community. It's been undergoing severe trauma, financial trauma, and it is, it's devastating black business owners. And we're here to reach out to you, Mr. Dawson, not to accuse you, but to reach out to you and appeal to your humanity, to rescind the eviction notice that has been placed at the Afeba Center, because, again, like Tetris Sherry said, we need those places that provide refuge, especially for the youth. And I just, again, encourage the city council, all the powers that be, who have the ability to rescind that eviction notice, and open up La Merck Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
The elegant, brilliant, honorable, and distinguished President Donald Trump and his undersecretary of HUD, Ben Carson, with the protection of our beloved United States military top brass and pilots, hurrah-rah, they are finally here to see what the fucking corrupted, unethical LA Democrats and fucking satanic elite Zionist Masonic Jewish assholes engineered, and that is the massive chronic poverty and homeless Holocaust, where we, the homeless lawful women and beloved United States military veterans, are daily subjected to violence, to assaults, fear and intimidation, brute force, theft, vandalism, drug, weapons, contraband, toxic loud noise, urinating on our tents, destruction of property, committed daily at the Music Center Grand Park and bathrooms in La Placita Alvera by your filthy nasty homeless, un-civilized savages, white trash junkies, the chungo Latino wetbacks and gangbangers, your violent Skid Row niggers. Shockingly, 99.9% of all homosexual males are fucking bisexuals.
Thank you. Your time is, your time is up. Take your seat. Next speaker, let's, let her, just pray for, come on. Okay, okay, guys, let, yes.
My name is Asata.
No, now, Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Sit down. Sit down now. Let the other people speak. Sit down, Ms. Ramirez, you're disrupting this meeting.
I, I suggest we ask her to leave.
Let's remove Ms. Ramirez, she's out of control.
Ms. Ramirez, you've been asked to leave.
No, just, no, Ms. Ramirez, please leave. Hey, hey, guys, just stay over here. No, let's have her removed, Sergeant. Let's just have her removed. No, just, Ms. Ramirez, let's just go. She's continuing to disrupt this meeting. Okay, ma'am, please identify yourself. Sorry about that.
My name is Asata Umoja, and I'm with the Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment. First thing I want to say is that I understand, Councilman Weson, that you have an anti-displacement zone, which I'm really happy to hear that you're going to be putting a motion forth for that, because that's what we need. And I'm also, also happy to hear you say, Councilman Dawson, that you have not approved of the Dorset Village Project, because that is a major issue of concern in our community. Now, I understand that there was a neighborhood stabilization policy that was established and co-authored by yourself, Dawson, Weson, and Price. The problem is, is that we're not seeing how that neighborhood stabilization project is being put into effect, because what's happening is you're talking about taking away cultural and social space in our community that has been there for over 25 years. The Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment supported the Afeba Center when it first came there. That was a eyesore. That place was poorly maintained by the city, even though it was.
Thank you. All right. So, that concludes general public comment. Where, where, Madam Clerk?
Council has item number 20.
Okay, let us prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, if we could, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Announcement, everybody in the rotunda right now, there is the City Hall exhibit for the David Lipkowski Project. I'd mentioned that before, that there, it's an artist who painted in Vilnius just prior to the Holocaust and during the Holocaust. It's a very interesting exhibit, and it includes a virtual reality component where you can actually step into the painting. They're signing up people all day. I think it may be full, but for the council members, we'll, we'll make sure you get in, where you can, as a high school student, actually put this together. You can put on the goggles and step into one of these paintings that depicts life in 1945. And it's right in the rotunda. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, could we all rise for adjourned motions? All rise. I'm looking to my right side, that's Mr. Kokorian's side. Now, I'm on my left side, is Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Yet Locke, the former president of the Chinatown Chamber of Commerce in downtown Los Angeles, who was also quite possibly the longest-serving news executive in Southern California history. He died last week after a long battle of Alzheimer's disease and cancer at the age of 83. He was also a driving force in the Asian American Journalists Association, who at one time honored him for paving the way for Asian Americans. Locke was a crucial figure in the history of Los Angeles journalism, as he helped build the City News Service into an amazingly vital and vibrant news agency. He graduated from Northwestern University with a degree in journalism before going to work as a public school teacher, and eventually worked as a top aide to former Los Angeles Mayor Sam Muerte. In 1972, he started with the City News Service, and in fact, in 2012, I led a council presentation to honor him at the time of his retirement, after 40 years with the City News Service, declaring July 27, 2012, Yet Locke Day in the city of Los Angeles. He was not only the business face of the City News Service, interacting with news editors and executives at TV, radio, print, and internet media that subscribe to it, he also served as a mentor to scores of young journalists during his career. He had institutional knowledge that few others possess about city history, local communities, culture, and the ways of government. And even in the past seven years since that presentation, there continues to be the changing face of journalism and demise of so many great publications and news sources. They have seen depleting funds and reporters having to cover more and more on so little, but to this day, the Los Angeles City News Service has remained an important, credible resource for the people of Los Angeles and to other journalists. So much of that has to do with the foundational work and vision of Yet Locke. He leaves behind his wife, actress June Kim, in Sarasota, Florida, where they have lived since his 2012 retirement. A scattering of his ashes is planned in Sarasota in October, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Any other adjournments? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.